In the area, across from where we.
Short-term rentals?
Yeah. So, the farm.
John, are there other short-term rentals that we have out?
Yes, violations as well.
No, violations as well?
Ah.
Okay. They don't have, I'm saying, there's nobody with, there's only one house, right? I think that currently has a permit for it?
Correct.
Correct.
Which is the house that has the permit?
Which is? Down on that end of town, that's over the sun.
Oh.
Okay.
There's other ones that we have, and they will identify with issue violations as well.
So, we don't have a problem with getting the permits that we need for any of the locations at all? I mean, we would like to.
My issue isn't really getting, I mean, obviously you should have had the permit, but my issue isn't that. My issue is, you know, the pattern. I mean, the residents, they deserve to have a peaceful existence and that it seems like there's just been some issues there, and I just hesitate with that, that's all.
Understood, and we continue to respect that, and we do understand that. We understand the same level of respect that we should have for our neighbors as we would be if we were living there, so we do understand that. And we continue to work on that. We continue to vet them. We have certain systems in place that we've continuously worked on to try and see who those people are and make sure that we have the type of people that are not disturbing. But we would love to maybe be involved if there's any disturbances so that we can understand how to better the property for the residents, including ourselves.
That's more of the purposes of having the permit, is that we have.
Yeah.
The village has all your information, and you are responsible.
We are hap- we're happy we're here today to do that.
Just to confirm, that's not 1115?
No, we, yes, we posted 111.
Okay, now I know where you're.
There we go.
Yeah. We posted 1115, yes, as a, we're not taking residents right now, 1115. We actually staying there. We posted 1115 in order to test the market and see if we would be able to also rent that out, because we, the same thing like we did in 1113. We were staying there for the first year and a half when we were there, and we started seeing that we weren't there often enough.
So what were you gonna do, someone bought it? Someone paid to rent it. Obviously, you have it up for rental.
No, so we moved them over to the 1113 for now.
And you have 1113 up there, too?
1113 we currently do have, yes.
So you have both up there?
Yes, we're there right next to each other.
No, I know, I mean, on Airbnb.
Yes, we have 1113. That's why we're here today, to get the permit for 1113. And we'll be happy to get a permit for 1115 as well.
So now you want two short-term rentals, not one?
Well, we would start with 1113 if allowed, and if that's not, and do you want us to hold off on 1115? We'd respect that.
I don't have anything else.
Okay.
So what's your process to vet your tenants? You mentioned earlier you've vetted them.
Do you wanna talk about the vetting?
The reason I'm asking that question is, you have a contract.
Uh huh.
You know what's in the permit. You should know what's in the permit about noise and parking and all that stuff. And they sign. But then the neighbors complained that they blasted music till 2:00 in the morning, or they parked all over the street. So how do you vet them so you know that's not gonna happen, or a good chance that it won't? And if it does happen during the weekend or while it's rented, is there a number somebody can call you and tell you that there's an issue going on as it's happening?
Hi, I just wanna say, I actually manage the property myself. I am very sorry. I wanna give an apology if they did disturb you. I wanna tell you that there are security cameras on the property where I can see at all times what is going on. I have not been aware that the police was called, and I can absolutely give you my phone number, just like all the customers have my phone number as well. We are available to them 24/7. I have never been aware that the police came by because there was noise, and I will be happy to give you my phone number, personal phone number, if there's any kind of noise or distraction. So far, I have not had a complaint from a neighbor to tell me that there was any kind of problems. There is no problems with the parking. Nobody is parking on the street. Usually, thank God, it has been, there have been wonderful people that have stayed so far. I haven't had personally, like, complaints. They've been respectful. I haven't seen music that is going up strong, and in the event that there was, I have security cameras to stop that as well. They are all made aware through guestbooks of the rules of the town about the music. That has to be dimmed by 10 o'clock, and usually, there's never been, like, high boombox. Usually, it's like they bring their, you know, little GBL and things like that. So I wanna apologize, ma'am, if you have been, you know, bothered by that, and I will make sure it doesn't happen again, and I will be giving you my phone number in the event that anything happens. But I haven't been made aware that there was any issues in the past.
How many rentals have you had there thus far? And are they all short-term rentals? You're not helping your vet?
Yeah. They're usually there for a few days. A lot of the resi- a lot of the people that have been staying there, we've been noticing are coming from the West Point University, because there's graduations and several other types of events during the year. So it allows them to stay with their families together in a property that they're kind of together with their families over, you know, some occasion that happens over there. A lot of those tend to be very respectful people, so we understand, you know, that it works for them to be there, and the type of people that there are, that come and rent from that place are.
We definitely have a lot of people that come from West Point. They're very grateful that they have a place to stay, especially during all the visits that they come to see their children.
But how many times have you rented it?
Maybe 50 times.
15 or 50?
50.
50, maybe, something like that.
And then you've only had the one complaint that you know of?
That's all we have. We're generally very respectful.
I mean, these are my homes. I take care of them. I value them. I would not let somebody that destroys them just stay on the property.
We stay in them as well, and sometimes we have weekends where we take our friends as well to stay in them.
And I think this is the confusion with the ATVs. It's because we stay at the property as well. We're staying right now. We're staying the weekend with our family. We bring friends.
There's several different things that I've seen that have been going on there. That's why.
Yeah, Mr. Cruz, go ahead. Go ahead. Introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Jose Cruz. I'm Daniel's husband. I have a complaint.
She will not admit to that, though.
I wanna correct the record. What's your name again?
Isaac.
Isaac. Isaac claims that there was only one complaint. The village would like to look at the police records. We had called the police four times. Not once, four times.
Mr. Cruz, on four different occasions?
On four different occasions, yes. Let me make the correction, I'm sorry. Four times. The last time the police arrived, before he got out of his car, he said, "I already know." I couldn't hear the music blasting when my windows are closed, and I can hear it. I'll go over there and have them shut it down. I'll cut it down. That's what he did. As far as for the ATVs, I don't, if you see you over there, 'cause I'm over there every weekend, it's a bunch of kids, that summer, running from my property that's adjacent to him, all the way to the vineyards, through the woods, to the Pele Vineyards at the time. My neighbor, which I told him when I got the letters from the board, I asked him, "Look, you wanna sign this complaint with me, or your concerns?" He said, "Oh, no, I don't wanna start any troubles." I said, "This is not trouble. This is our concern. You know, it affects you too." "Oh, well, I put up logs." He cut up tree logs, and he put them on the path behind the woods, so that they won't be able to go through the ATVs through his property. You claim that you are kids or whatever. You had a wedding, I believe it was last year, the year before that, and this is all family, you say? They were black people, now that I'm being prejudiced, but they were all African-Americans celebrating the wedding. They were loud, and not only, not only they were loud, but I don't know, you have a fire permit to permit them to do fireworks.
Fireworks?
Fireworks in their backyard, yes.
You didn't have that.
Enjoying the week, nonetheless. So. No, you had your chance?
Not a resident.
I didn't interrupt you.
Anyway.
Secondly, my biggest concern was, I moved from New York City. Everybody knows New York City, Brooklyn, Staten Island, where's everybody, Rhode Island, Long, 15 years, 15 or 16 years, how long we've been there? 16 years ago. To come over here, residential, and now gotta live next to this. I plead the board not to accept this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. So, those were our kids. They are kids, so we understood that they were doing that, so we actually got rid of those ATVs. There are no more. As far as the complaints, I didn't know about the complaints, but I don't think they've been there. When was that last? Yeah, so, none in 25. So since, that's a good point. So that's since we've actually started implementing some of the securities and some of the implementations in this past year, which is when we started actually renting it more consistently, is when we started doing a lot of that, making sure that we are vetting and securing the place. I think, unfortunately, some of the disturbance was us, and I apologize for that. So, I don't think that has to do with some of the residents, although maybe once, I don't know. But since then, we've really implemented a lot of the security to be able to mitigate some of the disturbances, and I think it's played a fact, 'cause it hasn't been probably in a year. And that's when we started consistently renting. Okay. John, would you like to speak on this? 2025, we've rented a few times to some people that were basically overflow from, it was really renting out 1113 you're talking about?
Yes, this is what we're talking about. We're discussing 1113.
Got it. So, how many times have we rented it? I don't know. One more, this year, you're saying?
This year, yeah, just this year alone.
Probably, probably, probably majority of the times. I would say at least 30 times in the past eight months, maybe.
And it's every weekend for eight months?
I would say three weekends a year.
Three weekends a month?
A month, excuse me, month. Three weekends a month, two weekends a month. We stay there once, once a month, so, on our bout.
That's a lot of rental, that's a lot of people coming and going.
It's typical for what it is, but it's only usually like two to three days, like I said.
Yeah, usually weekends are long weekends.
Right, that's basically it. So during the week, it's empty.
Could I get clarification? So, you said you take care of the property?
Yeah.
'Cause there's a different name on the, I guess it's the registered agent.
Okay.
Just Julio Morelos? I don't know. Okay.
Oh, yeah. He's a local gardener also, and he helps us just with maintenance.
Okay. I just wasn't sure, 'cause before you said you'd take care of it. So both, the both of you?
We wanted to list a local person that was within a few minutes' drive in case there's emergencies.
Like if there was a situation where we knew the police was coming, or there was a prompt, immediately it would have been stopped.
He's five minutes from the property.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Anyone else from the board with questions? Okay. Now?
Think they pretty well covered it.
Okay. Lena? We have it, we have it. I'll get to you. You wanna speak on this?
I just have comments.
Okay, go ahead. Okay.
I just wanted to know if this is legal. I mean, don't you have to have a certain permit? I mean, if they were buying the property for that purpose, shouldn't it have been zoned a certain way?
We have a short-term rental law, and that's what they're here for, is a permit for that. We have an objection to that permit.
I see.
That's what we're here for.
But when you first buy the property, shouldn't they, you know, if that's what you wanna do with the property, you know?
They applied for a permit. Like I said, Valerie, that's why we're here, and we had an objection to said permit.
Okay.
So we're, that's what we're trying to determine. You got it. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak on this? Go ahead, Sue.
So, Susan McConnell, Hyland Mills. So there's a permit presented to the board. I just wanna make sure, this is a clarifying question for myself. There's a permit presented to the board for them to get a short-term rental property.
No.
But they've.
No, permit.
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 A permit for them to be able to rent to short-term, right?
Correct.
Like Airbnb.
Correct.
But they've also just sat, I just sat here and listened to them admit that they've already been doing that.
Correct.
So to me, I just, I guess I would also then like to put forward an objection for, I don't really believe that's trustworthy than whatever they're saying, if they've already started to do things without permits. I don't know, just thought.
Thank you, Susan. Thomas, go ahead.
I understand, I, Thomas Powell, I understand that they own 1113 and 1115.
Correct.
What is the use of 1115?
That's their per- that's their personal residency.
It's been corrected from being divided up into 14 rooms that I remember counting the one time I was in there, and that was less than a, six months ago. Okay, but you see, I'm asking a question here, and I brought it up to the members of this board over two years ago, when it was revealed to me as a member of the ambulance corps, when I went there, that the house was a four-bedroom house that was divided into what I consider an SRO, single-room occupancy, that had over 12 people living in that house, each paying for their own little room.
Which house was that?
1115.
1115. They purchased that house in February of, February 21st, 2025.
We know that was going on there, and that then they.
And that's all corrected now?
Well, that was, we purchased it from the person that was doing that.
Okay, but this is correct.
Okay. I know.
Just.
Okay.
One question for Mr. Hand. This is renewable, what, every year?
Every year.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's my, yes.
Is it? Okay. Okay. What is the board's pleasure, or the attorney's pleasure? Let's go to you first. Would you rather I adjourn this to the next meeting, or?
I mean, I'd like to take a look, only because it's the first on hearing of it tonight. I haven't spoken with the building department on it at all, so I know they're trying to apply for the permit, but let me speak with you, obviously, find out where you are located on this, but that's, you know, we're once entertained, a motion to approve it, and some, that's up to you, but.
Your legal counsel, I'll take your, and your Italian, so it works to your advantage. Okay, is the board okay with that?
I am.
Okay. So can I have a motion in a second to adjourn this hearing to our October 9th meeting?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you later. Okay. Speed round. Public comment on gender items only. Going once, everybody should have it in gender. If you don't, you could tattoo it to your backs later. Going once, going twice. Okay, administrative business. Can I have a motion in a second to accept proceeded minutes of the meeting held on October, August, I should say, 14th, 2025?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Billis Clark McCleod, will you please read abstract six? Short-term rental people, take it to the hallway. Well, you can stay if you wish. Not at my meetings, though. Thank you, okay. You're welcome. Abstract six.
Contains vouchers 25260456 through 25260552, and totals $184,153.25.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve abstract six is read? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you all again?
Abstract seven contains vouchers 25260553 through 25260685, and totals $274,508.77.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve abstract seven is read?
Motion.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, abstract eight.
Abstract eight contains vouchers 25260686 through 25260767, and totals $117,559.50.
Do I have a motion in a second to approve abstract eight is read?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Seconded by trustee, I'll give it to Deputy Mayor Forelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fire department equipment request. Can I have a motion in a second to approve fire department equipment request five of 2025, for the purchase of two rupture seal Pro Emergency Response Kits and two Magna Seal eight-by-eight patches totaling approximately
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, fire department membership. Can I have a motion in a second to accept the membership application of Israel Weinstock to the Hyland Mills Fire Company pending a physical?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fire department roster update. Can I have a motion in a second to change the status of Dylan McCarthy, Ryan Lowe, Gian DeFranza, and Michael Weiner from active to inactive effective immediately as requested by the missing-in-action Chief Burke?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Resignation for the water wastewater department. All right, Kevin Clardy. Can I have a motion in a second to accept the resignation of water wastewater maintenance worker Kevin Clardy effective September 27th, 2025? Seconded by trustee Fryban. All in favor?
Aye.
And on behalf of the board, I just wanna thank Kevin for his years of service to the village of Woodbury, and I just wanna let the public know that he will be spending a lot more of his time working with veterans, especially through the Hudson Valley Honor Flight. So, thank you, Kevin. Okay. Appointment, full-time position, same deal. Can I have a motion in a second to appoint Jeremy Williams to the full-time position of water wastewater maintenance worker with a start date of October 6th, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to close and return multiple escrow accounts per the memo sent by Treasurer Podman due to inactive accounts in accordance with Village Code Section 272-21.1 and 310-50?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Authorized mayor to sign Voltreck EV Charging Station Climate Smart CTF. Okay, so this is previously tabled. Now, the documents that the board received were incorrect with the proper number sent in today, late in the day, roughly around 5:00 o'clock. So the board needs to let me know if they're ready to move forward with this, or if they want me to table it and give you more time till October 9th to review it.
I'm good.
Fryban Fabro?
On this particular item, this is essentially a taxpayer-funded charging station in the village hall parking lot. It's a fast charger. I don't know that we really wanna have cars parked, parking up there overnight.
They won't be parked overnight.
They can't be parked there overnight.
You can't leave your car there, you'll be fees.
Well.
You're hooked up. It costs.
So there's a, so, it, that makes a big difference, because if we, if it's a listed charging station, it's a, it's the type of charging station that transients, transient drivers use, because it's a fast charger. It's not a Level 2 charger. We have over a dozen fast chargers within literally a mile of this building.
Yeah, and they're all taken, trust me.
I've been up there, I use them, I have a car.
I use them too, and I have to wait all the time for them. I don't have.
Typically because they're out of service.
Well, that's another problem, but yes, they're out of service.
So, the issue here is whether we should be spending taxpayer dollars to support a station, a charging station here, when most of the residents who have these cars, have EVs, charge at home. They're, you know, that's one of the benefits of having a residence in order to charge this, because of course, that's much cheaper to do than these commercial uses.
I don't charge at home, so.
And you can afford it, but I, this is a difference. This is, this, if you charge down there, you're paying almost six times what you would pay for charging at home.
But if you need to go someplace, you have to park, otherwise you're stuck.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Most people charge at their homes. If they use a charger, they can use the free ones over at the Losi Lane and the.
Yeah, but they take all day to charge. You can't.
Then, then there's two other commercial chargers at the Mercedes-Benz, and there's another, another fast charger in that same area. I'm trying to remember who has the other one.
Mercedes lets you charge for free?
Yes, they don't charge for free. They pay, just like you pay at the commons.
You pay.
Yes, you pay, which you pay at the commons. This isn't a free charger.
This will be a revenue stream for the village, then, once we pay, we capture. This will be a revenue stream.
Right, so the, the projection is that if we only use the charger three hours per day, and the average charge at $25, that's $75 a day times 365 days, so it's 27,375 per year, and that's on a very conservative projection. So it will take the village about two years and seven months to recapture the initial outlay, and then after that, it would be a revenue stream.
Is that based on, or does that consider the cost of the energy you're using?
Yes.
So, the $25 for a 62-kilowatt hour is, that doesn't quite match the rates that are currently at the commons.
We can set our own rates.
Right, but you just set a rate that is strategically much higher, and you've also.
What rate? What rate did I say?
You said $25.
Per charge, that's the aver- they're giving us, again, they're giving us projections based on their experience, so they're saying the average charge at $25.
But that doesn't include the utility charge?
It's not, the utility charge is eight cents a kilowatt hour.
What utility charge is eight cents a kilowatt hour?
Our bill is eight cents, Des, where you pulled it up for me, eight cents a kilowatt hour.
That, that doesn't match any rate schedule I know of with, I think this needs to be tabled, and we need to get some real statistics on this. This is a quarter-million-dollar investment.
No, it's $71,000.
I mean, the second page says we get a grant, says 76,391, and then the estimated alternate fuel refueling property credit's 25,000, so.
Plus 50,000 from NYSAR.
So plus the 50,000 on top of those two things. So that's deducting from the original 223, so it's not as bad.
It is a $71,000 investment.
Okay. Not as bad as I thought.
But it will be a revenue stream eventually.
And a plus for the environment.
Back to you.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure? I know, trustee Fabro, what do you wanna do?
I'm ready to vote yes, but if the board wants to hold, I'll hold.
No, no, no. If we can move forward with this, if we've got a motion in a second to approve the proposal, I'll move forward with it right here and now.
All motion?
All right. Trustee Fabro made the motion. Susan, you wanna make the second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Not yet.
They're all diesel, but we're gonna have to.
That's coming.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Do I have?
I mean, it makes sense when you have.
Do I have a mo- I have a motion in a second? Do I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, the Newman's Own change. The family has requested, the village received a request from the Newman family to hold this over, so I have a motion in a second to continuous to our October 30, 23rd meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, highway vehicles. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize absolute auctions and realty to rebid two highway department vehicles that were previously on auction, but I believe they just didn't.
Financial auction.
Financial, yeah. They bid on them, and then they said. Financial, yeah, they bid on them, and then they said, okay...
Never mind.
Never mind, so do I have motion in a second to rebid those?
Motion.
Seconded by trustee Fryban, all in favor? Okay, part of the bonding, uh, requires us advertise for bids for several generators throughout the village, so can I have motion in a second to authorize Village Clerk McLennan to advertise for bids for several generators throughout the village at various locations? The bid opening will be held on October 14th and be awarded on October 23rd. This is all part of the bond that we obtained. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, receipt of bids, sanitary sewer manhole repairs, a bid opening was held on August 26, 2025, seven bids were received, so can I have a motion in a second to award Tam Enterprises this project, one second? Okay, so let me get a motion in a second to accept receipt of the bids.
Motion.
All right? I'll let you decipher. Do I have a second, give it to one of them, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, can I have motion in a second to award Tam Enterprises this project at the request of engineer Barbara as per her memo? Second, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, tie-in request for 45 Eastview Road, 48.
Forty-eight.
Go, I got it listed differently twice, it's on me. No, guess you got it right. No, but you have a 48 on there, yep. So anyway, the village received a request for sewer hookup for a property located 48 Eastview Road in Hyland Mills. So I have spoken to the water wastewater superintendent, that would be you, on the matter, and they agree that tying this home in is the best course of action, and speaking with the homeowner, they understand the costs involved because they would have to bear that burden. Therefore, can I have a motion in a second to approve a sewer tie-in request for 48 Eastview Road subject to the Orange County Sewer District One requirements and approvals as mandated by the county?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Ferrelli, all in favor?
Aye. It's just for the one property though, not the whole road?
Only one property.
Okay.
Okay, now we're gonna authorize me to sign stuff, can I have motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign cleaning and televising and sanitary sewers and manhole inspections, 2024, change order one, decreasing the contract by $33,758.83 and 83 cents?
Motion, second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Once again, authorize me contract to refurbish 522, that is our tanker. So can I have motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign it, sign a tanker 522 refurbishment contract with Gowan's Night Company in the amount of $263,211.25?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, smart covers, and this is part of the consent order for us, can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign a contract with Hadronex Incorporated for smart covers for the water wastewater department?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, as previously stated, we're gonna have to extend the tolling agreement to the New York State Thruway Authority, so can I have an, uh, motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the tolling agreement with the New York State Thruway Authority with the expiration date being October 23rd, 2025? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have one additional item. So, and the, the board was handed this late, uh, actually late, well, they were handed it before the meeting, but it came in today. So, two weeks ago, or a little bit over two weeks ago, the village of Woodbury discovered that the town of Woodbury had removed the village from the code red system. Okay, an email was sent to the supervisor two weeks ago, we got no response, but I will say I want to thank Nicole Young who responded, saying that she would review it to supervisor, and we heard nothing. Okay? So Desiree did her due diligence, got this proposal today pertaining to the village setting up its own code red system, which is under Hyperreach. Now, let me just say this, if anybody needs code red, it would be the village of Woodbury because we have your roads, we have your water department, we have your fire department, we have your waterways, your lakes, your streams, um, and we have your infrastructure beneath the ground. So, I don't know why we were removed from the system, and I don't know why we didn't get any response about removing from the system. So, what we have to do is now set this system up, it is not something we use every day, as you know, I think in my time as mayor, I have used it maybe three times, uh, one was after the Shewett Fire because I was concerned about water usage and just conservation because that was, that, that fire was insane with the two houses there. Uh, and then the other time was, I think, the severe flooding that we had with multiple roads being closed. So, it is a necessary, it's an insurance policy to inform our residents if there is a problem, but I will say that this is in itself now duplication of services. So, if anybody is saying otherwise about other services being provided, this is the only one at this point. So, I have a proposal from Hyperreach for $4,500. The village clerk, the village treasurer, I should say, puts her stamp of approval on it, she had always had access to the system, she had actually set up the system in the town of Woodbury. So, at this time, can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign a contract with Hyperreach for air, our emergency response system?
Question?
Yes.
Uh, is this an annual fee?
Yes.
Motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Do I have it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Oh my God, ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of regular business, and in record time, two hours and five minutes. Okay, thank you, Valerie. Okay, public comment, everyone's favorite part of the program. Come on down, you coming on down first? You're coming, there you go.
Janine Cortez, Hyland Mills. I'm sorry, everybody, I know it's late, but I have to. On Saturday, September 13th, at 1:00 PM, while I was vacationing in Florida, trustee Fryban approached my house, he walked past his opponent's lawn signs displayed on my property and proceeded to ring my doorbell. It was actually very, a very short interaction, starting with me asking, can I help you? He said his name, I stated I wasn't interested, and then he continued and said, you know, he's gonna annex the from KJ. I then said, I know exactly who you are, thank you for coming to my house, have a nice day. I would first like to know who the he was you were speaking of, Mr. Fryban, because I believe it's you. I decided to post the interaction, a, a video of the interaction on social media so my neighbors and members of the community could hear his words directly, I think it's important for everyone to see exactly who we are dealing with. Trustee Fryban decided to send an email out to the Democrats and then post on social media his interpretation of what transpired between us. You stated it was a hostile personal attack, that is a lie. What I found most troubling about your response is that you went so far as to bring up the shooting of Cur, uh, Charlie Kirk while referencing me. That comparison was not only reckless and irresponsible, it's dangerous. I feel as if you were trying to incite anger against me and make me a target for retaliation, and this I take very seriously. You called me tone deaf when in fact you are the one that is tone deaf. Your attempt to manipulate the narrative of what occurred was an epic failure. In fact, a lot of what you say and do is an epic failure. I attend village meetings pretty often, each and every time, I am witness to you being unprepared, constantly asking for discussions, the majority of the questions should be asked prior to the meeting as to not waste all of our time. You voted against the village being lead agency, you created a no annexation line in an attempt to deceive the community. I've listened to you question department heads and the town attorney, saying they're wrong only to be proven wrong yourself. Now you are going door to door spewing lies about those running against you, stating they are going to allow the annexation of Ace Farms, when in fact I believe that it is you and your team that's going to allow this. I welcome civil conversation, but I refuse to allow you to attack and spread lies about me because I posted a video of you to hold you accountable for your words. If you truly want to build unity, it starts with honesty and respect for residents who have every right to ask questions and share what their elected officials say and do. I love Woodbury and want to see our community come together, but that will never happen when elected officials like you choose to mislead, deflect, and use dangerous comparisons that put residents at risk. Words matter, and I will not be intimidated or made a target for simply sharing the truth, you need to do better. Now, my question to the lawyer, I'd like to know what can be done when an elected official creates such a dangerous narrative that could potentially cause harm to residents that he was elected to represent? What is my course of action?
So, unfortunately, I represent the mayor and the board, so I can advise you as member of the public, that's...
Okay.
You have to keep your own counsel.
Okay.
I can't give you legal advice, I can give the board, not you, unfortunately, but that's just the way it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Janine.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Trustee Fryban, Martha Lopez, Hyland Mills. When residents speak up, they do so because they care about this community, they have every right to question their leaders and to expect honest answers. That is why it is so troubling that you chose to attack a resident who simply shared a video and asked a fair question. Wasn't he the one that voted against the board taking lead agency? That question was rooted in fact, you did vote that way. Instead of owning your record, you overreacted and tried to paint her as hostile. The hostility was not in her words, it was in your response. What makes this worse is that you went further and like she said, compared her actions to the tragic killing of Charlie Clerk, Char, Charlie Kirk. To equate a neighbor posting a video with an act of political violence is not only false, it is dangerous. It weaponizes grief, it fuels outrage, and it puts a target on the back of a member of your own community that is reckless and beneath the responsibility of your office. Accountability is not hostility. Residents have the right to ask, to question you, they have the right to call out your actions, and they have the right to expect honest and, uh, honesty and integrity from you. So I will ask you directly. Did you enjoy comparing those actions to Charlie Clerk, uh, Kirk's death, to his killing? Did you enjoy endangering one of the very constituents that you were elected to serve? And do you regret your actions?
You expecting a debate here?
No, I'm asking you a question, I'm not asking, I'm not looking for a debate.
This is a section for you to comment, it's not a section for you to...
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, so no answer is, no answer is an answer, thank you. Woodbury deserves honesty, Woodbury deserves leaders who protect, not deceive, and Woodbury deserves far better than you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jackie, Jackie Hernandez, Hyland Mills. I just wanted to, um, just ask the board, um, the supervisor, the town supervisor posted a letter in reference to, um, she did a community notice in, in reference to the animal shelter and, um, a leak that was occurring, um, at the animal shelter. And I just wanted to ask the, the village board if you were aware of the sewer leak and if you took any steps to address this?
I don't think the board was, but I was made aware of it, and that was when I, I had asked Jason to go up there to take a look at it, and I'd also asked John Hand to go up there and take a look at it.
Okay, and when was, when were, when were, when did you become aware of...
Monday, Monday.
Okay, Monday, okay, so prior to...
Cause you went up there on Tuesday, Tuesday, or when, Tuesday you went up there? Okay.
Okay, so...
And Wednesday as well, because they met with the supervisor up there on Wednesday.
Okay, so prior to that, uh, the village was not aware of any issues?
No.
That's, okay, okay, because the town supervisor states in a letter that she gave to the community that for the past several months, the septic needs were being serviced. From what you, as a village, observed there, what was the issue? Cause it doesn't specify, it just says that there was an issue that seems to now need immediate attention.
So it appears the septic system is failing as far as they sent up yet, we're not, they're looking into it, I don't know exactly what happened to it, but we're addressing, they're addressing it and investigating.
Okay, so when you say there's an issue with the septic, can you expound on that a little bit?
It appears there's an issue with the septic field that is leaking.
The septic field is leaking, so, uh, the septic field by the animal shelter, where does that water lead to? The water, the leak, water, is that going into ground? Is it, where, where does that water go?
It's draining down into the ditch below.
Okay, so when you say it's draining in the ditch, is there an actual drain there? Or is it going into the ground itself?
Um, there's a catch basin right, located right next to that, appears some of this leaks into that.
Okay, so when you say catch basin, catch basin is normally for rainwater, correct? Okay, so where does this rainwater, normally the rainwater drain to?
Close to the rez?
Okay, so the sewer is leaking into the catch basin, which is normally for rainwater, which makes sense why that would go to the rez, and so this is now being drained into the drain water going to the rez. Now, I'm gonna come back, normally what is the procedure to handle, um, septic issues? Because I have a septic, so I know what we're supposed to do, but what is, what are we supposed to do in that situation? Normally, once you know that there's a problem with the septic? Okay. Okay, and then as far as the water, the reservoir itself, if that's draining into the water, what type of impact would that have? Is there any special testing, does the Department of Health have to be notified?
Department of Health was notified.
Okay.
Department of Health was notified because we are required to do so?
The village.
The village notified, the building inspector, actually, John sent an email to the Department of Health notifying them of the situation. What the Department of Health does from there is on the Department of Health, but in terms of...
Standard operation, anytime we find a septic leak inside a village, we've done it multiple times, many times.
So, are there any wells in the area besides the reservoir that, that would be impacted by the drain water?
Is there private wells over there?
Not in that direction.
Okay, but where? Not downhill?
Okay, all right, and would you have, uh, done something prior to this? Had you known about this being an issue for several months?
Same steps we took.
So essentially, this should have been reported to the village months ago when there was an issue that was notified so that the village could address it?
Well, there really isn't nothing for us to address...
Okay.
Because it's not our responsibility to fix it, he is a code enforcement officer.
...by the health department of the leak, beyond that, it's typically up to the owner of the septic system to repair or replace the, and to obtain engineers to design the new system.
Understood, so with drain, with sewage water going into the reservoir for several months, and we had a very active summer, would that have been something that the community should have known about? I'm just saying, from a village, if you're responsible as a village to report this, it, it then, it should have been a critical thing for the town to have reported to you because during the summer, we had tons of families swimming in that rez where the sewer water was leaking into. Okay. Okay.
I hear you. Let me finish my thought.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
So two, we don't even know if it may have leaked down there because we don't know how long it's been leaking. So there's no proof that it actually may have been through the reservoir.
Okay. Understood. So as far as the procedure is concerned, what would, what would, the next steps would be the town, is the village going to be engaged in this process for, you know, for, for what they need to do with regards to the sewer? Because now they're going to redo everything. According to her letter, she said that she, they're going to do a major step towards renovating the whole area and it seems like replacing the septic system itself.
Just like anybody who goes to replace a septic system, they have supplies with a set of plans. We confirm that it was installed properly through the process. Just like if your septic system failed, we would view it as an engineered plan. We'd review it and inspect it during the process of installation. So just like anybody, any homeowner would.
Okay. So from a municipality to another municipality, if this was the village and this was village property with its septic, would you have notified the community about the health concern that this could have posed to people that were...
That's a pipeline.
Okay. And the mayor?
The, the, the short answer is absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. I would have notified the public. Personally, I really don't want us involved in whatever is going to, because I think that, talking with them, this is going to be a prolonged project. It's not like an overnight fix.
No, it's not.
Okay. And it is, you're involving multiple government agencies to get this done? DOH, DEC?
Department of Health for sure.
Okay. The DEC also?
Uh, that depends on if the Department of Health has sent them.
Yeah. So it's not something I really need us tied into.
No, I understand. I just find it very interesting that you had a meeting, the, the village, the department had, had a meeting with the town this week, and this is the same week that we received a letter. Prior to that, there was no notification. So my issue is, is how many other situations are going on in our community that is doing, that is being done without the community understanding the potential risk that this could be? The potential health risk. So, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackie.
I have a question that they may or not, for the department head, you may or may not be able to answer. So you don't know now how contaminated the rez may or may not be with the leak, correct? Because again, as you may or may not know, New York State Special Olympics is holding a, a plunge on November 8th. Will that be impacted? They be allowed to go in there and actually do the plunge on that day?
Again, is it possible for us to tell if it can be placed in the reservoir?
You would have to, you would have to test the water?
No.
Yeah. We'd have to sample the water and then see what the E. coli levels are.
Would that be done to make sure that that's safe for them to go in? That's...
I would imagine the...
That could be broken. Okay. That, that's, I have a lot of concern, that's just the one I would just jump in.
I'd, I'd like to ask the question to, to John. Did you witness any leakage out of the field when you were there?
Yes.
Were they pumping everything? Were they, were they pumping the, the, I understand that that's, that was the temporary remedy, was they, they're basically pumping this thing every day?
No.
No.
They're not.
Not every day we leak.
Okay. Well, again, I'm, I'm just familiar with some of the, the facts of this. It just seems to me that they knew about it and were taking action. It wasn't as if they were ignoring it.
I don't think anybody said they were ignoring it.
Well, somebody did.
Not us.
True, correct. Somebody else.
I hear you, but you're blaming it off.
No, no, I just, I didn't say that they were ignoring it.
And, and I appreciate that because that's a big, that would be a big service thing to them. That, that's a big problem for them, and I certainly don't want to do anything to make their life any more difficult than it already is.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify something with you. So I got a bill, 528, 2023, emergency septic backup. They arrived and they pumped the septic dosing tanks. They considered it an emergency. They said they had to use a hydro jet, and it was still clogged, and they had to come back. So I just want you to know that it is from 528, 2023. I'm still looking at bills, so as far back as 528, 2023, and it's a shame that you're just learning about it this past Tuesday, because this has been an ongoing issue and probably potentially very dangerous for the kids that were swimming in that, in the, at the rez. And all I'm saying is that I don't want you guys caught out there because you guys just learned about it. So 528, so far, 2023 is the last bill I'm looking at, and if I find any more, I'll forward it to you guys, okay?
Thank you, Martha. Sue, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Go for it, Lisa.
Lisa Hens, Hyland Mills, forgot where I lived. It's late, you guys. Holy moly. All right, so I'm gonna, I had a lot to say, but I'm just going to make this one positive. Let's get some positive stuff. Thank you for those that approved our, our EV charger. I appreciate it. That most likely will give us points to get us to silver next year. So yes, so it is in our wheelhouse to get to silver. So thank you for that. The EV charger will also bring in, generate some revenue, like Sue said, but it'll also bring in people that are looking to charge their vehicles there, which, you know, there's restaurants and other events that could, somebody could walk to church and say prayers, they could walk to the park, you know, Mario's is around the corner. So it hopefully will bring some other revenue into our community. On another note, I wanted to thank Rob for the space for our Coolest Recycling. We've got one more day on Saturday.
Thank you.
You actually, the village has received an award for our efforts from last year. So through, is it pizza? We will make it pizza, if that's what we need. We will make it pizza. Um, because that was, that's easy. Uh, yes, so the Hudson Valley Regional Council has awarded several communities for their efforts on the Coolest Recycling. We actually had one air conditioner dropped off the other day that has like an R22 in it or something. It's a coolant, and if it had been allowed to escape into the environment, was equivalent to 600 gallons of gas. 600 gallons of gas. Just one little vial, right? They're not big, they're little vials. So we've got 18, uh, no, excuse me, we've got 30 different units there. We've got 30 units there. Hopefully, people will come out. It's this Saturday from 10 to 1. We've only got 30 units. Last year, we did 55. So bring your broken items with coolant, and I'll let everybody go. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else? Public comments? Going once? Going twice? Go ahead, Neil.
Neil Kraus, Hyland Mills. I just want to update the board and the public on the watershed intermunicipal council. The council hasn't had a, a meeting since 2023. The county kind of dropped the ball on it. It was the county's responsibility to keep it, keep it going. The last voting representatives from the village of Woodbury were the mayor and...
CJ.
And I think the, at that time, they talked about the water overlay protection district, and there were other municipalities in doing that. Been in contact with Simon Gruber, who was one of the last co-chairs. Last week, I spoke to him, and we're trying to get the, the council going again. And then we would go to regular meetings, but the, hasn't been any regular meetings or any membership from any of the municipalities since 2023. The, if you, people remember a few months ago, the newsletter from the mayor, where I was appointed to be the voting, a primary member, the voting member, and Jackie Hernandez, Jackie's still here, okay, is, is the, is the secondary. I'll keep informed how it's going. There is, I believe, eight municipalities who have voting membership in the, in the council, and that's basically it. Been taking the county a long time to get moving on this again, and I'll keep pushing on it. Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. All right, anyone else? Before moving on to board comment.
Jimmy, Hyland Mills, I apologize for keeping everyone here this late. Let me rehash something. Good question. If you guys approved the throwaway authority, now they get showers and everything else, is that adding to our sewer capacity?
It's not approved. We postponed it.
I'm sorry?
We postponed, we postponed until next meeting.
No, I'm just saying, if you do, does, does that apply to, is that going to affect our sewer capacity because we don't get new sewer capacity? No? Okay. Second issue is, you're telling me you need to add Am Door Park Water?
Yes.
But aren't they the same ones filed for annexation?
What's that?
Aren't they the same ones filed for annexation? How does that work?
There are pieces of it filed for annexation, but I still need to move forward with the project that we bonded for, which is, I think, a $5 million project or a $4.5 million project to tie them in. But there are pieces of that that are part of this annexation.
So, Janine, thank you for speaking up. This is getting very political. You know what? We're, we're, we're right there, November. So you have, what, this meeting, you got two more in October, so I guess a lot of things are going to be done. There's going to be a lot of attacking, there's going to be a lot of presenting different opinions. My, 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 my issue is to you, Andrew.
Yes, sir.
You are terrible.
I know.
If...
Heinous.
You are going to sell out of Ace Farms. Shocking that they did not vote for you in the primary.
I know.
That doesn't make any sense. So how does anyone go around saying that you're going to sell, um, to KJ?
Not sure.
So now my question is, if an elected official is allowed to go out there and spread lies like that, wasn't this an ethics committee issue? So what is going on with the ethics committee?
I, I've got that on my board comments.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll deal with that.
So now, my, oh, the second issue with you now is Code Red. This was the last issue you put on your agenda.
What's that?
Water main breaks, sewer backs up, you know, something that really affects our families.
Okay.
You can't notify me, correct?
What do you mean? I could put it straight. What's the, I don't understand the question exactly.
As far as you lost access to the Code Red system right now?
Oh, yeah, no. I couldn't, I, I, we had no clue.
You had, you know, Wi-Fi in the back of the brigadune. You can't notify me.
No. Couldn't.
Why is this not big news? This is more than just political, and we know it's politics involved, but...
No, I, I, I know there's politics involved, and, and I did, we did send a very respectful letter.
And we try again, and...
I've, I've...
I have all faith in the world that Desiree is going to get the village system in effect. But how long is that going to take? And you can't guarantee me nothing's going to happen.
Listen, she'll be on it tomorrow. I signed the contract, the board approved it. We'll move forward with it and be fine. I just don't know why, like I said, the email that we sent, I thought was above board.
But again, at this minute, I am not covered.
Yes, at this minute, you're not.
So until Desiree completes this project?
Yes.
I am not covered.
Correct.
The residents of Woodbury are not covered.
Correct.
Because the town took you off.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Anyone else? Comments? Okay, department con, uh, department comments. We'll start with Rob.
Oh, me?
Yes, you.
Um, just October 11th, we have our electronic insurance event. It'll be from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
John?
He set it up for all of us.
Okay. Lino, your first meeting, and it was a short one.
Happy to be on board. Thank you very much. The board is working with you all.
Do you have, you want to give an update on the second annexation? You have anything on that? That's the one you're handling?
Yeah, that's the one we're handling, yep.
Okay. Do you have anything on it?
It's time.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, do, 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 that's it? Oh, do you have anything? Okay. Tara Burek, confidential lives of the mayor. Nothing? Not a, nothing? Okay. Let's start with Jim at the end.
With respect to the open space annex, I understand that our attorney is going to look at the progress on that, but I'd like to point out that back in March, our previous village attorney outlined all the steps involved in this kind of a procedure, and none of those things have been done. We continue to carry this item over as an open public hearing. I don't know how long ago it was first noticed, but it, this is a complicated document, and we have just, we have yet to see this document, and that's why I'm concerned that we keep carrying this over. We need to have enough time to examine the whole document because there were a lot of errors in it. It's a matter that needs to be discussed. I think it really, there should, we should have just simply closed it and then re-advertise it when we had a complete document ready to present to the public. Also, as Jimmy had pointed out, it is election season, and the grandstanding has already begun here tonight. The, the facts, the facts have been rendered in a, in a fashion to basically distort what's actually happening here. And it's unfortunate that this is the way the next month and a half is going to be, I suspect, because virtually, the, the last few speakers have all, are all involved in the political process, so you really need to consider the, the objective of their comments. I have made it very clear why I voted against your resolution to be new lead agency, citing, in fact, the parts of the environmental conservation law that, that specify the steps, which were confirmed by the attorney that we've since hired. So that was the reason. It's, has nothing to do with us not being lead agency. It has to do, it has to do with us doing it in a, in a fashion that DEC can see that we're competent enough to do a very complicated review of a type one action. And I think it is very clear that my position is that any annexation is contrary to the master plan, which sought to balance development with the capacity of the land. That's the reason that annexation should not be permitted, and I would suggest that anybody has a question about who's doing it, they check your website, Mr. Mayor. In any case...
Mr. Oo, Mr. Mayor.
I think I've kind of taken too much time asking questions, which appears to be something that, that people who spoke think that they, that anybody should be able to ask questions, apparently not the trustees. But have a good evening.
Trustee Fabro.
Okay. First, I'd like to start off with, although Lisa already did this, a reminder that the Coolest Recycling Drive is happening this Saturday once again. Highway Department, 10 to 1, I believe, was the times. That's it for events. On the other hand, let's try and keep the temperatures cool over the next couple of months. We're one community here. No matter the outcomes at the end of the day when it comes to the elections, let's not let it get too personal, folks. And we'll keep trying to do our best to serve you. Have a great night.
Trustee Suriel.
I have nothing, thank you, except maybe a bathroom break, there's a five-minute bathroom break, I'm sorry, I won't, thanks. Other than that...
Deputy Mayor, for... Deputy Mayor Farley.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. As always, I love hearing all the comments from the residents. If your comments and your opinions do matter, I expect this is out of time. I don't have any comments, it's, it's late, so I'm done.
Okay, so first off, I want to thank Woodbury Fire Department, who once again held their 9/11 cer, remembrance ceremony. And they do a wonderful job. I think people forget that they're volunteers and they put that together. They, honestly, they do 90% of the work that needs to be done for it. So I want to thank each and every one of them. Just a couple of dates to quickly go over. The Harriman Treatment Plant. So they were in Harriman at a board meeting doing a presentation, Delaware Engineering. We have got them secured for our next meeting. So if you want to know what's going on with the treatment plant, October 9th, they will be here, okay? The Narcan Training we did last year, which I think is so vital and so important to this community, will be hosted on October 16th here in Village Hall. Once again, sign up. The, it's all our first responders along with the village hosting this and they give you a free Narcan kit, you never know when that will be needed. And then the Lego Club will be coming in on, on October 26th for their third annual Halloween. So, um, Smith Clover Road, okay, with the parcel there. I signed the papers. The buyer or the person selling signed the papers. So all I've got left to do is do a closing. And we're all good. We own a farm, okay? More duplication of services. So microphones, Chris Gerver is working on those, the amazing Chris Gerver is working on those for us. The Ethics Committee, I did put out a, because we have one opening for a Democrat and/or an independent and one opening for a Democrat and/or an independent. It is important. We had two resignations from there, one moved, one is going to move. So I did put it out on social media. I already had a, a couple of people respond. I'm putting it out there again. By all means, if you're a Democrat or an independent, send me an email with your interest. Now, let's talk about the heinous mayor, okay? Because what Trustee Fryban is doing is nothing short of slander to me. And the latest bit of news is he's walking around with a newspaper or a piece of paper, which is all in Yiddish, and the only name on there is my name. And he's trying to claim that I somehow, 279 Hasidim voted for me on the primary. That's not the case. He has been going around, because I've been getting these calls, and of course, there's the video that Janine presented on social media, where he's trying to say that the mayor is, is not fighting for us and the mayor is going to give it away to, to them. I saw the response, Janine, as well. And I don't know how you could say with one hand that we need to work with our neighbors, but at the same time, you're trying to paint them as the evildoers that the mayor is working with. So it doesn't make any sense to me. In the meantime, I'm not the one who voted to not have the village of Woodbury serve as lead agency. Not once, but twice, okay? And I don't know where Jim got his law degree from, but Kelly Norton was probably, and I think Lino would concur, the best land use attorney in Orange County. So to basically dispute things with her when she's actually worked on these before is kind of silly, okay? I'm the one who hired the high-powered attorney that Kelly suggested we hire. So I don't know how it's me not fighting, because I'm also not the one that voted to give KJ a tax exemption. For years, they have been looking for a tax exemption on their infrastructure in Woodbury. And for years, the town and the village, every single member of the town and the village, you could list names, have all voted it down. There have been three no votes to that. One by Trustee Fryban, two by us Trustee Fryban, and a third one by Trustee Fryban. So three times, Trustee Fryban has voted to take tax dollars out of your pocket and give it to KJ, okay? Consolidation. Last year, the Woodbury Democratic Committee sent various emails about how heinous the mayor was again because he wasn't listening to the consolidation argument. Well, a year later, we now know what this consolidation was all about, because it would have been two municipalities against one, with the town and village. Merging against KJ and Palm Tree. Okay? And finally, finally, if you want to know, Chris Gerver, I think he is the best planning board chair we have ever had, okay? In my lifetime at least, okay? I was told two years ago with the last election that I was in, that they wanted Chris Gerver gone and we are gonna remove his wife from your board. And I told them where they could stick that fact, okay? Now, I, that's how I got two trustees, different trustees. The same question was told to these trustees that are still here, Sue and Vic, last year, where they wanted him gone and they wanted somebody else put in. And I think, Vic, you actually left, okay? So I have not voted down Chris Gerver as planning board chair. I did not make up a story that Chris Gerver didn't have his certifications and he wasn't educated on any of this, when in fact, it's Chris Gerver that set up the education system for not just the zoning board, but for the planning board, okay? He is there for us. And I have never voted him down. And yet, Trustee Fryban has, over and over again, okay? So when somebody knocks on your door and says to you that the mayor, and it's not just him, all right, I'm putting the blame on him here because he's here, but it is also the Republicans of the town board, okay? And it's the Democratic Committee. So if you are being told this, you can come to me and tell me, but I have just given you fact after fact of what I am not doing, okay? I am here, I, I put it out to this community. What do you want me to do with this annexation? I put it in your hands, okay? Do you want me to fight this? Do you want me to go to the mattresses with it? Or do you want me to work a deal? The community wants to fight it, I am all in, okay? That is why, like I said before, why we hired the high-powered New York City firm to handle this annexation. So when Jim Fryban is going around telling people, when he knocks on their door, the mayor's not working for you, he's giving it away, he's working with the, with KJ, please, honestly, tell them otherwise. Because I literally just spent yesterday at the senior center explaining them all this and pretty much verbatim what I just said. It is wrong, okay? I don't know if anybody, I honestly work hard for this community, okay? The insinuation that I am working against my own community or working or, or not getting anything completed, which is, I guess, the newest thing now with the latest email? This is dirty politics. This is the worst, I actually think. I thought it was bad last year with Sue and Vic, but this is bad, because they're stealing banners off roads. And I don't think it's the people running. I don't know who did it, but they're stealing banners now. It's never happened here. So I don't know what's happened to this community, but it just saddens me because I will be the one selling Colleen on whether the juice is worth the squeeze, okay? Whether it's worth cutting up oranges and going to the store and cutting up oranges and putting them in a blend, you know, putting them in the juicer, or is it better just to pick up a two gallon can, container of juice? But the juice is worth the squeeze and I feel the community is worth the squeeze. So please, do me a favor. If you hear it, say something, slam the door in their face, be nice, but by all means, not interested, and then close the door. So that's it. That's really all I have for tonight. So with no further business to discuss or comments received, can I motion a second to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next scheduled meeting is October 9th. Until then, remember, when Chuck Norris slices onions, onions cry. Come on, Valerie, that was good.